Everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona-Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspaper, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bird.
Here.
Mr. Verhulve.
Here.
Mr. Shonar.
Here.
Mr. Mandel.
Mrs. Dyer.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. Seeing none, good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Good evening.
So we're day two into back to school. How did everybody do?
Two thumbs up for two days.
My kids were thrilled to be back.
I know I am.
I definitely am.
She's your responsibility, not mine.
All right, do we have any committee reports?
We did not. I don't think so, do we?
Well, we met.
Well, we, go ahead.
We met.
Negotiations. Negotiations. What we met with last was the custodian negotiations, and that's still in progress, from what I understand. We're very close. There's still just a couple of few tight ends to be tied up there, and we'll be good to go, but that should be done shortly.
Fantastic.
I was gonna say, you've been working on a little project there. Yes, we have Cedar Grove Waves. I don't know if you're familiar with it or not, but we do a 9/11 memorial at Cedar Grove High School, where we put 3,000, approximately 3,000 flags on the front lawn of the high school, representing each of the victims that were there that evening, that day, and the country, the countries they're from. And it was a little bit of a challenge this year because we wanted to be able to put nameplates next to the flag, so, because everybody knows somebody, or everyone has experienced somebody. And so, the flags went in fast, the gridding went in fast, and the nameplates took like three days, very hot, and, but it came together, it was perfect. I was just counting the kids again, because they signed in. It was 23, no, it was 30, it was about, actually, there's 30 kids, 30 students from the high school that showed up to help me over the four day, four or five days. And we also had approximately about 20 younger kids that are from the middle school that helped, the Boy Scout troop also helped. And I just wanted to point out also that, you know, we did a GoFundMe site for, to fund it, because the markers do cost money, and stuff does cost money, and Investors Bank really came in and was a huge help and made a donation, and so did the GBA, came in and made a donation as well to support getting it off the ground. And if you follow my Facebook feed, you can see, I try to report on all the things, so it went really well.
Thank you. It really was, it was really, really nice, and Mr. Shonar's actually been having live feeds of it, so you can, if you're friends with him, you can actually sit there and watch time lapse, and this gets darker, and just, it's really quiet, and it's, it's kinda nice to watch, and I know where to find him, you know, for the next few days, that time of the evening, so. And the ceremony, by the way, that you organized on Sunday was also really, really nice as well, so.
Next, next year, we're, it's official, we're going to do something very, very formal, much more formal than pipes, and we will also, we are going to be doing it actually at the time, at eight o'clock in the morning, you know, from about 8:15, 8:30, and taking two moments of silence like we did this day, we're gonna do it exactly when, you know, the planes look at the towers. So next year, we'll be much more formal.
It was still very nice and moving.
No, no, I won't take away for it.
No, absolutely, it was great.
You guys are great.
It was great.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other committee reports? All right, we'll all be back to FSA meetings next week, right? So we'll have plenty to report. In the meantime, though, we have the Globe Trotters Club here to talk about their recent trip to China.
Hello, everybody, my name is Chris Canelo, I am the co-advisor to the Globe Trotters with Amy Saraco and Judge Justin, who's not here tonight. We're kinda here to just present our trip that took place in June, this, right after school ended, and I thought it would be a great photo, a great opportunity to show you some of the photos and some of the things we did. It was definitely a great experience, this is the second trip we ran in the spring of 2015. We went to Barcelona, Paris, and London. It was a great success, the trip booked out, sold out. The China trip was a little smaller, I think it's a little more exotic destination. We, we had 20 students and three adults, and there were some other adults that accompanied us on the trip. So, here we go, the CGHS Globe Trotters, China, June 2016. Okay, so, it's not all in order, just, you know, but I think mostly is, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna narrate. Ms. Justin's good with the PowerPoint and music, I know last year she did a little, little video for you, and, you know, in the midst of everything, opening school, I didn't have time to do that, so, plus, I don't mind hearing myself speak sometimes. So, we first visited Tiananmen Square, this is literally the first day. First of all, we were on a, what was about a 16-hour flight travel there, you, you leave, we left from Newark Airport, we get there the next day, because there's, there was a 12-hour difference, so you get there 36 hours later. Okay, so I guess that, that was probably an experience, I don't, I, I believe there were not many people who had done that. I had done that, taken that trip November of last year for a training tour. So here's Tiananmen Square, and behind us, that is the Forbidden City. If you don't know, you know, the history teacher in me says Tiananmen Square is, it's the largest square in the world, and this is where the, and they don't mention it when you're there, obviously, you know, China does have some restrictions on what you can say. That's where the Tiananmen Square Revolution took place in 1980, in the late 1980s, and right, right along this road is where they took that, that famous picture of the student standing in front of the tank, you know, I did point that out to the students, and this was a group photo we took, and, actually, I forgot to bring the booklet, darn it. In this square, you took a photo, and they, the students were able to buy a booklet, and it had all, all of the things we went to. In case you didn't get the great photo, it's, it's a great book, I have two copies of it in my classroom, but I forgot to bring it. All right, so more from Tiananmen Square, this is some of the freshman boys. You see the, this building back here is actually where, where, what's his name? Oh, Mao Zedong, where Mao Zedong is, that's where he is, that's his internment, is in that building right here, and this is the, the monument in the middle of, of the square, okay? And just some more pictures of the boys. By the way, it's not like, there were only five girls on the trip, and there were 15 boys, that's why there's just more pictures of the boys. Here are all the girls. It was very hot there, by the way, it was about, you know, the first day was 90 degrees, and, and the weather is a little different there, in that it, it is a big city, there's a lot of smog, although we, I think we had a pretty good air, air quality week. And this is, I'm very popular there because of my size, so the, they, they always like, when I went there the first time, there was the one kid who came up and rubbed my belly and said Happy Buddha, and he wanted to take a picture, so this time, this, this Lama came up to me and wanted to take a picture, so I had to put that up there. Now we enter the Forbidden City, right from Tiananmen Square, you see all, all of our kids online. We're in the first courtyard of the Forbidden City. Okay, Ms. Justin, and little, little Justin Foos down there. Okay, some of the girls taking a selfie in the middle of the Tiananmen Square, and one other thing that, that's culturally different, is that a lot of the girls that were with us are, have blond hair and lighter features. So, a lot of the Chinese tourists, not the, not the people who are from the Beijingers, it was very popular that they would go over and want to take pictures with, with our girls. And most of them were girls, so it wasn't, there wasn't a danger or anything, but even Eliza, Ms. Justin's daughter, at one time actually had to stop it, because she was getting annoyed with everybody wanting to take a picture of her. So, you know, it's, it's a different, it's a different culture, it's a different, you know, just as our people are seeing them for the first time, a lot of the, their tourists who are coming from other parts of China are seeing these types of people for the first time. Again, this is another group photo, Forbidden City. Now we've moved over to the Summer Palace, this was beautiful. The Forbidden City is where the emperor stayed most of the year, the emperor and, I believe the emperor had upwards of a thousand wives, and they all lived in the Forbidden City. During the summer, they came to the Summer Palace, because it was hotter, and they had trees. You noticed there were no trees in the Summer Palace, lots of trees, you had the lake, you know, where they actually did some mock battles and stuff like that, when, you know, back 500, 600 years ago, when this was popular. Okay, and this is a Buddhist temple that, we didn't get a chance to climb up to, but I, last time I was there, I was able to climb up there, great views. We took a little boat ride, some of the gang on the boat. This is one of the most popular sites in the Summer Palace, and this was the Queen's, she had this built, it's a boat made of marble, obviously it doesn't float. She used to have her tea ceremonies, it was the Dragon Queen who used to have her tea ceremonies up here, and they used, she used to have the Chinese opera singers come in here and do performances for her in this, you know, beautiful, it's, you know, piece of architecture. So, another thing in the Summer Palace, it has the world's longest corridor. You walk down this corridor, and there's art on every post, it's, it's beautiful, you know, it takes a while, because everybody, you're looking up and taking pictures. Okay, this is the Temple of Heaven Park, and the Temple of Heaven Park was where they did religious ceremonies during the harvest, and that's basically all they really used this for. You know, so, again, and a lot of the stuff we're visiting goes back 700 years. Yeah, some of the boys, we were able to zoom in as they were going in and out of the gates at Temple of Heaven Park. Shot of the temple. And for some reason, when we were in the zoo, I, we weren't with kids, I didn't have taken a picture of kids, but I did get a great picture of the pandas. So this was one of my favorite things, taking the pictures of the pandas, it was awesome, because you don't really get to see them that often. Okay? And to me, is one of the highlights of the trip is the Great Wall. Okay, so, you come in, and you have two options. You go to the right, and they say, well, you know, this is the steeper part. I think about a third of our boys decided they were gonna go all the way up to the top, and I was like, okay, just be careful. The rest of us went to the left, which was still steep, and Ms. Saraco and I were holding hands as we tried to get up. We did make it all the way up to here, this is where we made it up to. Okay, it was not easy, I had my walking stick, and it, yeah. In fact, the, the group of the boys that went up to the right had come down, met us at the bottom when we were done, and went up, and then came back down. So, you know, again, to be young, so, again, this is one of the greatest places I've ever been, this is the second time I was able to, to be there, it's, you know, it's breathtaking. Okay, and the students loved to buy the little hats. Everything there, but that was one of the highlights of the trip, too, is bargaining. I don't have pictures of us doing that, because I don't want, you know, to ruin the kids' mojo when they were bargaining with, with the peddlers at the silk shop at the last day, but you could go there, and, you know, they wanna bargain everything, if they offer you 400 for something, you, you paid 20, you paid 25. Okay? And so the kids were all, and they all compared, I got this half for 30, I got it for 10, I got it for 15. So they're all comparing how, how, how great of a bargain they were able to buy on these hats. And again, this is right outside the Great Wall, the group photo. Ms. Saraco taking some great pictures. I didn't use any of her pictures, that's why they're not, not the best pictures, her camera was much better than mine, and, you know, she, she's the expert photographer. Some of the girls taking a break all the way up on the Great Wall. Okay, some of the freshmen smiling for us as they met us, they surpassed us, too, they went right past us and went all the way up, and, you know. The adults taking a rest, and again, we did make it all the way up to here, I don't know how, but we made it back, too. This, this was one of the, one of my favorite parts of the trip. We visited a, what they call Hutong neighborhood, and the Hutongs are these little courtyards, where a lot of families live for hundreds and hundreds of years, and usually you have two or three families who live in this one little courtyard. They, they share a kitchen, there are no bathrooms in the Hutongs, the, they have public bathrooms, public showers, okay, and you're thinking, well, this is, this has gotta be, you know, really not a great place to live. The gentleman that we're gonna visit, he told a story when I was there in November, and we, we kinda did the same thing, that the government had offered him 1.5 million dollars to leave the Hutong, because they want the land, because the land value's so good there, and he said no. He said, I want 2 million. And so he's holding out for 2 million dol, American dollars, and I'll show you a little bit inside his house. And he's retired, and, he was a retired chef, so I'll, I'll show you, and I think that's just amazing that, you know, people, our students saw such a different way of living, but, you know, look, they're not poor, it's just a different way of living, it's, and it's, and it's amazing, so. These, the Hutong means these little alleys, okay? And that's what you see, we, we took on the rickshaw, they kinda pedal you around, my guy had to do a little double work, but he got us there. So we, in this little park, the, the kids decided they were gonna, you know, play some, what is it, hacky sack, or some kind of Chinese hacky sack with this guy, and he, he was very nice, he actually didn't even ask for money, a lot of times they do, and, you know, they, they played, and we were there for a good half hour, just hanging out in one of the parks. This is a type of art, sugar, they use sugar to make these little art sculptures, and the company kinda sets this up for free as an exhibition, and, you know, the kids were all fascinated with it, some of them had dragons, the Zodiac, the Chinese Zodiac signs. So this is the dinner we had in the Hutong neighborhood, the family actually cooked for us. And it was actually the best meal we had there. Okay, we had some greens, were these those little vegetable, like, sweet, well, they were delicious. Here, the boys, and I, I will tell you that the kids were very polite, and very, very respectful, knowing that they're visiting somebody's home, I was very proud of them. And they, they made some dumplings for us, and that is something that is made typically when you're having family or an occasion, a special occasion, so. And this is the guy, and then again, this is his little, you see the little courtyard back there, that, that, the other family's on the other side, and that's his granddaughter. You know, he actually hosted me twice so far, so I really thanked him and was very appreciative. This is the Lama Temple, I didn't get a lot of pictures, my camera died that day, but the Dalai Lama, which, he was actually banned up until recently from China, and now he's actually allowed to come back in recently, I think they, they've worked it out, and we were able to, to go in and see, you can't take pictures inside when you go into the temples, because it's just, it's rude to do that, with the exception of one, maybe I took it illegally, I hope not, but, you're really not supposed to be taking pictures, and I'll show you, there's one picture of this, breaks the Guinness Book of World Records for the largest single sculpture from one tree. This, this statue, and it goes up hundreds of feet, is from one trunk of a tree, okay, and it's still actually in the ground. Okay, and that is Confucius. Okay, we visited the Olympic Park, and we did some Tai Chi. Okay, I just, I volunteered to be the person taking the pictures and not doing the exercises, it was a tough choice, but, you know, and there's Ms. Saraco doing some exercises. Some of the, the girls doing them, they, it was, it was, they actually did it for almost 40, 40 minutes, you guys were doing it. So Tai Chi's, it's kind of a stretching, it's not overly aggressive, it's just about body motion and balance.
And actually, that was the back there, they were like mist, but all that gray is confusion. It's not, it's not really raised by, which, they call it mist.
Another highlight was visiting a school, and this school, it was a, was a private school. Most schools in China are, are private schools that, that we visited. And it's an opera school, so it's a music school. And here, the, the, the boys are learning how to do certain flips, and certain acrobats that would be used in the, the Beijing-style opera, okay? This was one of the, we went into, we saw three different performances, one were the, the flips, and I had the videos, and I didn't, I didn't have them when I made the PowerPoint, but they were home. And this was a young, a young man who was doing opera, and he sat for about 15, 20 minutes, singing this one song and doing all of this acting, it was really great. So we went to a silk factory, and they saw how silk is made, and how the blankets are made, and where it comes from, they did a little demonstration, some of the kids bought some stuff there. Okay, we did a tea ceremony, and they showed us the different types of teas, and you see the demonstrator and the kids, smiling. We tasted about five, four or five different teas, okay? And you see all the different teas that, that they have here. And, and it's interesting, because they even tell you the different temperatures that you have to serve them at. Okay? So it was a great trip, the kids were great, you know, I, I think it's an experience that they'll never forget, and obviously, we have some things coming up, where Ms. Saraco's gonna be the lead on the Costa Rica-Nicaragua trip, Ms. Justin is coming, it's back to her again, in June of 2018. The Africa trip, we'll be doing the information meeting on the 29th, and starting to sign people up two years in advance, because, so they can, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was great.
My son had the opportunity to go to, to China with Mr. Canelo and the group, and he had an amazing experience that he talked about on and on, and he swears he tried some of that food, but I'm not even gonna ask you if that really happened.
Yeah.
And, uh...
They gave us some cookies, here's what they did after.
He came home with a lot of the protein bars that I sent him with, so that's a good sign, so, and I said to Mr. Featherson, we now own a lot of tea, so that was a, a nice little, you know, gift from China, so, so thank you. He had an amazing experience, thank you for taking them.
All righty, move it on?
Yes, moving on.
All right.
To Robert Donahue.
Yeah, because that's not, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so it's not on the agenda, so, but we're gonna have another presentation by Robert Donahue, and he's going to talk about Woodland Park, and how wonderful and great it is.
I don't think the mute is on, so I just went to ask Joe to make sure the mute is not on, like, we, we, but.
Okay, okay, thanks for having me here tonight. The reason I'm here is I was asked by Mr. Featherson to evaluate the Woodland Park School and look at the individual rooms and the doorways and stairwells to determine the capacity of the spaces and the means of egress. So we, what we did is, we went through, we measured the school floor by floor, each of the rooms, starting with the ground floor, and we prepared these documents that we presented to the fire official in Woodland Park. And the reason we did it is because, I guess there was a document that was distributed by the fire official at Woodland Park that had some numbers that didn't quite work out with the way you were using the building, and based on our conversation with him, it was a matter of, he wasn't measuring as precisely as we were, I, I went in with a laser, he went in with a little wheel, and he didn't know exactly how the rooms were being used. So, knowing how the rooms were being used, we went through, where's the laser on there, Joey?
So...
Okay, here it is. So basically, each room is identified by the room number, the use of the room, the square footage of the room, and then in this trapezoid, we have the allowable capacity of the room based on the IBC 2015 Table 1004.1.2, which is the, the code that is referenced by the New Jersey Uniform Construction Code. And then, what we have here is this dashed line indicating the exit access travel distance. In an unsprinkled building, in education use, you're allowed 200 feet, so you can see, for instance, we, we take the worst-case scenario of a room, and we, we take for granted that you can't walk straight across the room, that you may have obstructions, so we create the longest path possible to the door, and here we have 100 feet, so we're well within the 200 feet. At this point, we measure the door, and we subtract a certain amount from the door to account for it being open and actually blocking part of the opening, and then we use the New Jersey Repudiation Subcode, which is referenced in the Uniform Construction Code, which says that for a doorway, for every 22 inches of width, I don't have this notes with me, for every 22 inches of width, I believe it is, you're allowed 100 people. So every unit of 22 inches, you get 100 people. So this door has a capacity of 140, we are actually only gonna have 39 people in this room. So we're allowed to have, you know, 27 here, 7 here, and 5 here, we're actually using it in this case for 39. But, for instance, in this room, you're allowed to have 34 people, and this isn't, this isn't just students, this is people. And the door has a capacity of 131, but you're only putting 24 people through that door. So this is, you know, if, if you look at the space, there are no issues with this ground floor. Any questions about the ground floor? If not, I'll move to the first. Okay. First floor, we did the same thing, we, we took, we looked at each room. Now, what's really interesting, and in my opinion, great about this school, is each one of these classrooms, these big corner classrooms, has their own exit door, right to the exterior. So we don't even look at these classrooms as if students are going through the center of the building and down the stairs, they are exiting directly. But again, in this case, we took a worst-case scenario around the perimeter room, 51 feet, well within the 200. We look at the capacity of the door, 150 students, and for this door, we only have 18 students exiting the door. Here, 31, over here, 26, 24, so you can see there are no issues with egress. The stairwell, there's another formula used for the stairwell to figure out the capacity. The capacity of this stairwell, being six feet, I think it's six feet two inches wide, 245 people can go down per floor. So, we have the capacity of 245 people, we have 19 people going down the stairwell. We also identified the capacity of these doors in this scenario where they wouldn't go to the exterior, they'd go through here. Again, you can see these doors can, can handle 150 people, there's no way you're gonna put 150 people in these rooms. Same thing with the second floor, the, the floor plans are pretty much the same as you go up. These rooms are all typical, 713 square feet, they can hold 35. This room, we have 23, 26, 26, 25, and then we have small group instruction rooms that can hold eight. In this scenario, the only rooms that are exiting down the stairwell would be the nurses and the small group instructions. And so, the stairwell can hold 245, we have 18 people going down the stairwell. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yep, I thought before we moved ahead, we'd give Mr. Featherson an opportunity to talk about the Woodland Park School and Mrs. Dyer, and some of the, the changes that were made recently, specifically to the, the fourth grade, and how that's being housed currently, which is a little bit different than the open house on, on Friday, so, thought it'd be a good time to update everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Dyer. So, you know, first I want to say just how grateful we are, I am, I'll speak for myself, for, you know, your patience, your support, your feedback. Ms. Dyer and I couldn't be, I guess now I am speaking for you as well, we couldn't be more, you know, pleased, frankly, with, with the support that we've had from the Woodland Park community, their teaching staff, our students, and certainly our parents. We knew going in, late July, when this incident happened, that we had our hands full, didn't we? And there were a number of folks who questioned whether or not we could do it, and certainly offered questions as to why we were making certain decisions, but given the circumstances, given our timeframe, given the options, the viable options that we explored and had it narrowed down to, we settled on Woodland Park. And it's more than good enough. Many of you have been there, and your feedback has, you know, has been even more positive, you know, once, once they've seen the layout, the cleanliness, the thoughtfulness that went into planning this, this location. And that planning and thoughtfulness continues. And so, as recently as this weekend, and I'll let Ms. Dyer talk a little bit more about, and we're not gonna talk about this all night, but, the plan changed again. You know, it's one thing to, to secure your occupancy loads and present them and share them. know, it's one thing to, to secure your occupancy loads and present them and share them and talk about them and involve the fire captains and marshals from the state level to the local level to architectural level. But it's quite another to fill those spaces with teaching supplies, chairs, desks, and people. And so, on Friday, Friday passed, we had an open house and we had lots of people in that building and lots of some of those things in place. And late Friday afternoon, we realized, you know, we've, we've got some other things to reconsider here. So, the plan going in was X. And the plan after the second day of school is now X plus 2. It's changed a little bit. And we've, we've asked you all along to understand that the plans that we put in place on one day may be changing based on frankly, your feedback and a consideration of lots of other variables. And so, today, after the second day of school, we've come up with a slightly different plan. And I'm specifically referring to the 4th grade team. Now, we apologize, Ms. Dyer and I, for not pushing this information out sooner, but we're sometimes criticized for not producing timely information, fairly or unfairly. I'll let you be the judge. But frankly, folks, this stuff is happening in real time. And we've experienced this building for the first time, as you all know, for the first two days of the school year. So, you know, there's been some suggestion that we should have had this program sort of solidified by now. And well, I recognize the criticism there. I accept some of that, we do. But we have to remind you of what we've talked about all along here. This plan was going to change. This plan was going to evolve based on your feedback and us sort of getting a sense of how this is going to work when everybody's in school. So, Monday, we've, we've had lots of people in that building. We had code officials, we had fire marshals, we had architects, we had administrators, we had the mayor, we had board members, we had, most importantly, the children and the teachers. And we knew pretty early on, we had to make some adjustments, didn't we? And so, we've made them. So, tonight, we'll talk a little bit about those changes. At the end of the week, Ms. Dyer and I will put together a more comprehensive update to each of you and to your parents at home, what those modifications have been. And we ask again, only that you understand that we've been in there for two days. Two days. And the children have been so impressive, you know, to, to watch them sort of adapt and, you know, it's been great. It's been just what we thought it would be, probably even a little bit more. So, we need you to understand, please, as a reminder, that, you know, modifications are happening. We think for day three, we've got a pretty good idea what we're going to look like the rest of the time we're there. And if you ask me, if you were to ask me, "Mike, by day three, you have your plan, would you be happy with that?" I'd have taken that in a minute. Taken that in a minute. To have our plan sort of modified and adjusted and worked out for the third day of school, you bet. And all along, what was taking, what was driving these modifications, I've said this 100 times, I'll say it 101 times, safety. Every step of the way, the first consideration was, how was this going to be laid out? How will these children be able to move around, get outside, get inside, do security drills, fire drills, learn, interact, socialize. And every once in a while, in the course of my seven-plus years here, you've heard me say, "Sometimes education takes a backseat to safety." And I'm going to, I'm going to sort of digress just for a moment about transportation. We've been having some issues with transportation. I'm asking again for your patience, because the first priority is student safety. Yes, the buses have been late, both Monday and today. Yes, we've made our inquiries, our complaints, we've, we've made our demands to get here on time so that we can implement the plan that we have on paper that we think and we know will work very well. But let me get back to safety. It takes time to get those buses when they arrive late and you're all waiting there eagerly to get to school. It takes time to get those kids, one by one, logged on to which bus they're getting on, in their seats, seatbelts fastened, attendance taken again, and then finally, off we go. So, you know, oftentimes, we want, you know, this fast-food society we all live in. Look, I love a Junior Whopper with a cheese, like the best of them. This is not a Junior Whopper with cheese moment. It takes time to get these buses loaded, unloaded, safety checked, head counted. And so, you've, oftentimes, the feedback we get, no, I'm not being critical, but I'm just being matter-of-fact, sometimes the feedback we get is, is a little bit myopic, a little bit. And those of us that are living through this every day, our lenses frankly are just a bit, bit broader. There's so many other considerations that, that we, we have to take into consideration. And no offense, you're not living this every day. You know, you, you see a particular thing and make a particular suggestion. And while we appreciate it and we accept it and we're open to it, our, our view is much broader oftentimes. So, please, work with us with transportation. I think by tomorrow, it'll be a bit better. And by the next day, just a bit better than that. Getting back to Woodland Park, so impressed with how folks are adjusting. We're pleased that we think tomorrow, we're going to have a pretty good plan, that we think we'll have for the remainder of the time we're there, the 67 or so days that we have left there. And I'll, I'll be the first to tell you, if, if we're not there yet, we're going to make adjustments again. We've been there two days. So, you know, phone a friend, let them know how grateful we are for the support we've gotten. You've been helpful, you've had good ideas, we've used many of them. And frankly, they've, they've been really the, the inspiration behind some of the modifications we've made. And we've said that we would do that all along. If we're not heeding your suggestion, you know, perhaps that's because our lens is a little bit, you know, different. Don't take offense to it. We're doing the best we can. So, having said that, I want Ms. Dyer, look, she's tired, we've, we've been through...
It's nasty.
Okay, I'm tired. So, if, just want to say a few words. Again, we're going to be a bit more specific with our e-blast coming out. If you could just say a couple of words about the 4th grade team and what it will look like, simply put, what it will look like tomorrow.
You probably have to for the camera.
Well, as Mr. Featherman said, it was, as, as the little people entered Woodland Park, we made some changes based on seeing those children sitting in the, in the classrooms and recognize that we do want to make the changes necessary to make sure that we have an optimum learning environment. And I think one of the things that we had to consider was that safety piece and making sure, you know, we can have numbers that say you can put this many children in a room, but that doesn't always necessarily mean that that is the best decision to make. So, when you see those bodies in the room and we look and think, hmm, okay, so maybe we need to make some adjustments. And that's what we're, what we're doing. So, one of the things that we did was we pulled Mrs. Masato's class out of the classroom and into their own space. And as a result, one of the things that we had to do to make that happen was we had to make some changes to that room. And so, again, we did that in two days. And so, really one, but ultimately, it's our second day of school. And so, I think we've made great strides. And that all being said as well, I think it's important to remember that a week ago, we had nothing in the buildings. And so, we made some incredible progress in that short time with the support of the district and Woodland Park. And as Mr. Featherman said, on and on and on, and parent volunteers that came and helped decorate and all of the people that, I don't even know where to begin to, how to even thank them. I am tired, I said. We may have more adjustments. We're going to make them in the best interest of kids and the staff. And we're going to get there. I think we're there. So, the classroom will look a little bit differently. It is still the 4th grade learning center. They're going to continue to do things together and they're going to continue to move around because that's what we know that kids need. Nine-year-olds need to move. And sometimes, they're going to move more often. I have a few extra periods in my day built with PE because our little, little people are in, at LRP. And so, I have some PE spaces that I'm going to be able to get children outside more whenever we can. Of course, we're not only there for us to go outside, we're there to learn. So, we're going to balance all of those things. And sometimes, when we have a plan and we have to adjust that plan, then we have to change a schedule and we have to do some things. And we had to do that today. And again, we did that today because it's what we needed to do to make sure that day three was better than day two. And that was better than day one. And we're there. I apologize for my little breakdown. I promise I'm okay. It's just emotional because it's been a lot. And I'm not really sure what else. I think, I think we're there. And I appreciate more than you know, all the support that we've been getting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it just, you guys know more as a parent than a board member. I want to thank you both. And obviously, more importantly, your staff as well for everything you've done. After all said and done, any parent who thinks that there's something wrong, obviously hasn't seen those kids coming off the bus at the end of the day. And when they come home waving and smiling, you know it's been a great day. So, I thank you both and your staff, as a parent, for everything that you've done in this unfortunate situation. We all can't wait for that day to come home. But in the meantime, thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you've done. As well as you, Mr. Featherman, who I can't see from this center.
Sorry.
I'll see you in the morning. You can thank me in the morning. We're waiting for those buses.
Right on time. We'll make that call tomorrow morning.
And I just want to say that Mr. Shoner and I had the privilege of seeing the kids get off the bus in the morning these last two days. And I know there's no smiling at my house when people go off to school, but these kids were all happy when they got off the bus. And Mrs. Dyer was there shaking everybody's hands, giving everybody high fives. Mr. Shoner was a little scared with his mustache. Some of the kids were a little apprehensive. But on day one, everybody lined up outside. They did the Pledge of Allegiance. It was just a big, great moment. They all filed inside. And the place looks great. It really, really does. And I was speaking to Ms. Masato today and, and she said something really great. And I told her I was going to quote her and she said that was okay, that, you know, it's not the building that really just makes the school, it's the people inside. And everybody has to keep that in mind, that it's still the same wonderful people that are running the show. It's just in a different building. And, you know, and she also said that, you know, this teaches kids that, you know, things don't always go the way they're supposed to go. And sometimes, you got to make adjustments and you go with the flow. And that's a great life lesson for kids to learn, because I've found that things never go the way they're supposed to go. So, learning that early on and being able to accept that and deal with that, I think that's a huge learning experience right there. So, again, thank you to the both of you who just non-stop, non-stop, in all honesty. You guys have done a phenomenal job and so has your team. So, thank you. So, let's move on. From the office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion for B1?
So, move. Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code. And further pursuant to the code, no major account or fund has been over expended in violation of the code. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Berg.
Yes.
Mr. Verulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Uh, Mrs. Dyer.
Yes. Okay. Under Business, can I have a motion for B2 through B6?
So, move.
Second. B2 is a motion to accept the donation from the medicine shop in Cedar Grove for the following items at an approximate value of $1,200 for the 2016-2017 school year. And I'm actually going to say what they are. They're two EpiPens and two EpiPens on juniors, which I think is huge and thank you. B3 is a motion to approve Brahma Construction Change Order Number 3 in the amount of $11,727. The change order includes the items listed below. B4 is a motion to appoint Michael DeVita as the district qualified purchasing agent according to the rules and regulations of the code as listed therein. B5 is a motion to appoint Michael DeVita as the public agency compliance officer until January 10, 2017. And B6 is a motion to approve the payment of $5,011.20 to the New Jersey Department of Unemployment for the 2016 second quarter unemployment payment. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Berg.
Yes.
Mr. Verulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Uh, Mrs. Dyer.
Yes. From the office of the Superintendent, under Personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through, okay, let's go for it all. S16.
Wow, let's do it.
Let's just keep moving.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, S1 is a motion to retroactively approve Michael DeVita, Business Administrator, effective August 29, 2016. S2 is a motion to retroactively approve Sabrina Zunick, North End paraprofessional at a rate listed therein, effective September 9, 2016. S3 is a motion to retroactively approve the resignation of Mia Palmer, MMS Math Leave Replacement Teacher, effective September 7. S4 is a motion to retroactively approve Susan Pedersen? All right. MMS Math Leave Replacement Teacher at the rate listed therein, effective September 9. S5 is a motion to retroactively approve the following substitute nurse for the 2016-2017 school year at a rate listed therein. S6 is a motion to approve the following substitute teacher for the 2016-2017 school year at a rate listed therein. S7 is a motion to approve the following tenured staff to receive mentoring fee reimbursement of $550. S8 is a motion to approve the following staff members to receive a sixth-period extra class stipends for the 2016-2017 school year. S9 is a motion to approve the following staff for supplemental instruction during the 2016-2017 school year at the rate listed therein. S10 is a motion to approve the following staff for home instruction during the 2016-2017 school year at the rate listed therein. S11 is a motion to approve the following staff for the NCLB Pathways After-School Program. S12 is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses as per Policy 9180 at a rate listed therein. S13 is a motion to approve the following as a school volunteer. S14 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events for the following employees. S15 is a motion to approve the following leave of absence. And S16 is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Berg.
Yes.
Mr. Verulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Uh, I'm abstaining on five, but I and everything else. And Mrs. Dyer.
Yes. Okay, the meeting is now open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. All right, Mrs. Zunick? You have to take the microphone. You do, it's okay.
So, they can hear you at home.
Right. And you have to kind of just stand right over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta be on the, right. Right, right. Right. You don't have to sing and dance or anything, just sit right there.
Can you hear me?
And just state your name.
My name's Sabrina Zunick. I live on Seven Morris Court. I'm from Cedar Grove. I need my notes because I'm emotional and I'm tired. I am a parent of a second grader at North End. And I've been at this school for 12 consecutive years. I've been there longer than some principals, some teachers. I've seen so many changes. And when we heard about what happened at North End, it affected me. And I was very upset. And, because that's my home. That's where my three, my other two children went. And I was mad. But I got over it because I knew who was there. I knew I had Ms. Dyer there. I knew I had you guys there. And I knew, I knew things were going to be good. But it was a long road. were going to be good, but it was a long road to get here. But I'm happy, and I'm grateful for all your support, and the kids are happy. I've been at the school for the past two days, I also was there a week ago helping decorate, and it is different once everyone's in there. The kids are smiling ear to ear, everyone's happy. The playground, to see kids laughing and smiling and playing, it is, I walk in there, I smile the whole time, and seeing you two guys there too, it was nice, it's nice support for everybody. I just want to say thank you. I don't know what else to say, but you guys did a great job, and I know it was tough, and I'm here for you, so is my son, and my other two children, and my husband, we're all here for you. And I think if you need anything, we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, right there, it's good, please. Camera, thank you.
It should be on. Yes.
Hi, my name's John Spina, I live at 32 Fox Road in Cedar Grove, and the reason I'm here tonight is because of the transportation issue Mr. Featherman was talking about. And before I get into what was going on, and I know you guys are working to fix it, I just want to kind of like paint a little picture. A year ago, I sold my house in another town to come here for a better education. I got here last year, my kids attended South End, loved it, the administrator was great, the teachers were phenomenal, and it was wonderful, because it was right across the street, and the kids walked across the street to school. This year, we had a little bit of an issue, and, you know, we turned to the board, and the board discussed this busing situation, and we said, "Great, you know what, it's going to cost us a little bit of money, but we'll shell out the extra money." I am a teacher, you know, so the teachers in the room know that our salaries, you know, we're stretching it, but for the benefit of my kids, we paid for the bus. And we were assured that the bus would stop at the top of our street after a little bit of discussion, because initially, it was supposed to stop two blocks over, and I brought it to their attention, I said, "Look, there are no sidewalks over there, there's a crossing garden near Fox, can she just walk up to the top of Fox?". Yes, we were happy, everything was good, so, until yesterday, she goes to get the bus, bus doesn't come, bus never picks her up, doesn't even drive by there. My wife waited there, so it just never even came to that point, so if these bus people are telling you they went there, they did not. I said to my wife, my wife gets emotional, I'm an educator, you know, I know that there are mistakes, there are things that happen sometimes, I coach sports, you know, and I know sometimes we have bus issues with sports as well, and I said, "Give it time, let's work it through." So, we reached out to the board, or to Mr. Featherman, we were assured, "We'll fix it, we'll get it right today." Now, today, she was with my babysitter, and my babysitter's job is, you know, because I have to leave early for work, she's to walk my son to school and monitor my daughter at the bus stop. My babysitter has another job, working in another school district, so I have to leave at a certain time. My daughter's bus time was set for 7:35, and they tell her to arrive 15 minutes early, so the bu, the bus is supposed to be there at 7:35. And before I even get into that whole thing, the bus didn't show up again today, and she, you have a 10-year-old girl having to hitch a ride, because a parent recognized her standing there, because the babysitter had to leave to go to work, and basically shoved her off into a vehicle with a parent to get her to the middle school on time. Okay? Now, let's fast forward to the end of the day. I have a long day at work, I come home, after telling my wife, "Don't worry, give the board that a chance, they'll get this busing right, they'll put them in their place, they'll straighten it out", because I know how my superintendent handles things, and if we have a bus issue, there's a phone call, and they're, they'll get their act together. I come home, my daughter's crying, "Dad, I hate going to school, I don't want to go to school, the bus doesn't even come to pick me up." Now, I don't know how many of you would feel good about that, coming home to that, but I felt horrible. I moved here so my kids could have the opportunity, you know, that these other kids are getting here, because of the reputation of this school district. That's why I bought a house in Cedar Grove. You turn on the news, and you see a video, and you see a video, this girl jogging before she was abducted, and can you imagine these parents, the parents that have to watch their daughter, and they have no idea where she is? Now, I'm not saying that's going to happen, I'm not saying the kid's going to get kidnapped, you know, there's a 99% chance that nothing happens to her, and she stands there and waits, and waits until she just hates going to school, because the bus isn't coming to pick her up. So, the reason I'm here is, I'm not, I'm not the type of person that wants to sit and hide behind an email and say, "Oh, I'm going to type this to you, I'm going to type that to you." I am a teacher, I've been a teacher for 17 years. I was the Union County Teacher of the Year as a phys ed teacher in 2009. I'm not a slouch, I'm not somebody that goes to work and doesn't do their job. I was the 2015 Star Ledger New Jersey State Coach of the Year for Boys Volleyball, okay? I have adequate, adequate time supervising students and athletes. My scope is wide, I'm just like you, and on day one, on day one, I plan for things that are going to occur and things that aren't going to occur, and I hear you guys saying, "Oh, well, you have to take attendance, you have to get every kid in a seatbelt." Well, guess what? If you're a responsible bus company, you took this trip before, and you planned this out, and you said, "This is how much time it's going to take to take attendance, this is how much time it's going to take to put these kids in their seat", so that kid at the next bus stop isn't waiting there by themselves. So, to me, there needs to be like a little more proactive behavior in this, because if something does happen, what's next? I reached out to you guys, were you guys going to just say, "Eh, it's the bus company"? I don't want to feel like that, I want to feel like we're working together, I don't want to feel like I'm being like told, "Hey, this is the best I can do." My mother is a school bus driver, if she left a kid at a bus stop, she'd be fired, she'd be fired on the spot, okay? And she's been driving a bus for 14 years for the Bellevue Board of Ed, and there's, there are bus drivers she works with that have gotten fired for forgetting a kid on the bus, or not picking up a student repeatedly. So, I know this is an independent contractor, and there's only so much you could do, but maybe you guys need to put the fear in them. Maybe there's, there needs to be, like, "Hey, if tomorrow this happens, you're done, we'll contract out to another bus company", because as a coach, I know how easy it is to contract out to another company, because we do it all the time, and there are always bus companies looking to take these bids. So, I don't even expect an answer, I just hope the bus is there tomorrow, and I hope I don't have to come to the next board meeting and sit and complain about the bus system, because your school systems are great. You know, once she's here, she loves being here. You know, it's not that, it's just a matter of, I don't want to create an element in my home where my daughter feels like, "I'm not getting picked up to go to school, so I don't like school anymore." It kind of, you guys are familiar with bullying and harassment and all that nonsense that's going through now, and to me, when you deprive somebody of something where you're constantly, it's like a repeated action that causes someone not to want to go to school, and I don't want that, I just want her to be able to go to school. So, if you guys could collectively work as a group to fix this, you won't ever have to hear my voice again. I'm not a complainer, I'm not a, I won't be a problem to you, you won't see me here or at town meetings complaining, I just want this fixed, because the last thing I want to hear is, "Someone snatched up my baby and took her, and I'll never see her again", you know, and that's, that's a reality, because it's, it could happen, it could happen. So, thank you for your time, and I apologize for any hostility or harsh feelings I've had, but I get very sensitive when it comes to my kids, and I know that I take care of other people's kids all day long as an educator, and when I go home, I want to feel like people took care of mine, and that's it. So, thank you for your time, and I apologize for taking so long.
We're all looking at me. Well, you know, everything you said, Mr. Spina, is right. You know, as I said, as you know, I've reached out to you a couple of times this afternoon, and as I said in my email this afternoon, it's completely unacceptable. And Mr. DeVita and I, have taken steps to address the issue, both verbally and in writing, to the transportation company, and, you know, I'll say this on the record, if this isn't fixed, we will be contracting out to another company. You know, as I shared in my email, you know, we're giving reasons, explanations for why while the bus driver got lost, the route was 20 minutes behind, ultimately, if you had stuck around long enough, she would have... None of that matters. I have children who ride buses, there are sometimes issues, they need to be rectified. We're working together on that, we're, we'd like to think we're working together with you on it. I'm with you. It's unacceptable. And just for clarification, what I was talking about regarding seatbelts relates to the North End, the Woodland Park routes, they didn't give me the excuses about seatbelts, that was our own internal issue of getting, you know, loaded and off to WP. Their excuses are unacceptable, whether a bus driver's lost or whatever. So, we hear you loud and clear, please know that we've been working the issue since Monday, we've worked the issue further today, and we're going to get this fixed.
Anyone else? All right. One thing I did forget to mention, because it's just been a long night and a day and everything, is that the Woodland Park Mayor and Superintendent, and the Building Supervisor of Grounds, and the Captain of the Police Department, and five other police officers were there on the first day to welcome everybody and offer their, you know, whatever we needed. They were really great, so I just didn't want to forget to thank them, because they didn't have to do any of that. I mean, we rented a building from them, they, they went above and beyond, and I'm, we are really grateful for that, so, thank you to them as well. All right, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Berg.
Yes.
Mr. Verhulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner. I. Ms. Dyer.
Yes, and before we actually end the meeting, I forgot, announcement of future meetings, because there will be more, September 20th, that's next week, 7:00 PM Executive, 8:00 PM Here, and as of right now, it says October 4th, but that will probably change, and we'll give you an update on that shortly. So, now it's over, have a good evening.